All right, you're good to go, Lisa.
Good evening. I'd like to open up the Monday, May 4th Selectmen's Meeting and call it a water. I'm going to call on Tim to recite something he needs to say.
All right, just silence this here so I don't confuse myself. Let's see, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions on the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 19, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectmen is being conducted via revote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort is being made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by accessing the live stream of this meeting on the town's YouTube channel, youtube.com/freetownma, or accessible by visiting freetownma.gov/frecam. In the event this livestream is unsuccessful, I am recording this meeting, and the recording will be posted to the town's YouTube channel as soon as I am able to following the conclusion of this meeting. Good to go?
Thank you so much. All right, I will entertain a motion to sign the warrants 045 to 048 for the month of May.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwald?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And myself. Thank you. Aye. I just want to say before we get started on this budget, we've come into some additional information on Friday from the House Ways and Means Committee. And the additional information that we got is that the FY10, the last recession, we had a 29% reduction in local aid. Then that equaled a $2.5 billion reduction in revenue. This budget that we're about to get for the next fiscal year is going to take about a $5 billion hit. So that's double the recession of FY10. And if everybody remembers, in FY10, we laid off about 50 people. So I just feel like we can review the budget and go over some things, but it doesn't make much sense because we really don't know where we're going with this. The state, we don't even know if they're going to be able to close their budget for this fiscal year. And we know that next fiscal year will definitely be worse. So I mean, we just should tread lightly and slowly because I'd hate for these numbers to get out and become reality for some people, and then it's really not going to be reality. So I just feel like we need to get a better direction from the state, and we need to have more solid numbers before we go forging along and making any hard-wrestle decisions. And, you know, we can always revisit things in the fall once we know better. But I'm going to turn it over to David and Kim for additional information.
Okay. We did prepare an operational budget for the next fiscal year, given certain parameters and certain assumptions that were made regarding a decrease in state aid and looking at freezing funds through the end of the year and looking at our revenues in terms of the May 1 collection. And at this point, I would hesitate to go into any great detail on the operating budget with the information that we have in there because like Lisa had said previously, we don't want numbers to be out there that potentially aren't real. And I would take, I think it's kind of premature at this point to be presenting an overview of something that may change drastically between now and town meeting and may further change come September, October, when we have our Fall Town Meeting. So given that, I don't know if Kim has anything additional she'd like to add, or...
Actually, I think that was a pretty good summary. I agree that there's still a lot of uncertainty concerning where the state is going. The information that came out today, or maybe it was yesterday, in the Beacon that's put out by the MMA, they are advising that communities be cautious that there is likely going to be a significant impact from the state. But at this point, there still has been no word from the governor. There has been no word from the legislature as to what that actual impact will be. There are a lot of folks lobbying for the federal government to step up and to offer some type of relief package. Back in 2008, when the housing market crash hit, there was federal stimulus that did come to bring us to level funding for state funding in 2009. And then we felt the impacts in 2010, once that funding was gone. So I do think that we need to be cautious. There definitely will be a decrease. How big a decrease, it still remains to be seen. And we probably won't really know, I would think, until maybe August, September, by the time the state has an opportunity to really figure out where they're going to go and how they're going to handle this. There is, you know, a stabilization fund at the state of $3.5 billion. So there is some suggestion that that would help mitigate any impact in fiscal 20. And perhaps it might mitigate some of the cuts that might have to come in '21. To just give you a quick update on where we are right now, actually, based on the collections that have been brought in through the end of today, we have actually met our budget goal for revenue. So there will be no shortfall on the revenue side of things for Free Town. And I've also taken a look at some of the identified expenses that will probably not be spent, and that is another $265,000. So I feel pretty comfortable in saying that we are going to escape fiscal 20 without any significant damage. And, you know, certainly, we don't have to cover any shortfall at this point, so that is a relief.
Charlie, do you have anything?
No, just good news for this year here. We'll see what happens beyond.
George?
Well, a few things I want to hold off on right now. But what is our game plan here? Are we going to put a budget together, or what are we doing?
For tonight?
Yeah. What are we doing tonight and going forward?
Going forward, we have to put a budget together. But as of for tonight, I think that, given that we know what we know now and what we've learned and hearing from both David and Kim, I would, again, I would hate for numbers to get out there because people are going to just jump on those numbers, and they're going to think that that's what it is. And really, right now, that's not what it is. I mean, it looks like our numbers, you know, I mean, given even the cuts that Kim had put in there, I don't, I'm not sure that that's even going to fly. So I just, you know, want to be cautious about how we go. Wednesday, we're going to talk, I mean, now that we know that the schools have the dates available for our town meeting, Wednesday, we'll talk about actually voting on a date, whether it be the 20th or the 27th. And then we can go from there, and then we'll have more time to work on this budget because I think that a meeting, I think a meeting has to take place between both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and that's the only thing we should be discussing on that night because it's going to take a long time to go through this budget and decide on where the cuts are coming from, where we're going to be going with this. So as much as I'd like to go through this budget, it's just a piece of paper at this point. That's how I feel. Gary, do you have anything? You have to unmute yourself.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good idea that we should have a joint meeting on just the budget. Yeah, I'm reluctant to express any opinion that could wind up being a violation of the open meeting law on anything substantive that we might have to vote on. But yeah, I think a joint meeting could be a good idea.
Okay. George, back to you.
Well, okay, I mean, that's great that we're bringing the Finance Committee. I think that's a good first step. But I'm just trying to get a feel for the timeline of what we're doing and when it would be done. And something that was suggested to me earlier was that maybe what we should think about is doing a budget, a six-month budget only, instead of a year, so that we could get into the fall with whatever we put together and readjust then, good or bad, depending on how things work out.
I mean, the Fall Town Meeting is always a place where you can readjust things if needed and if necessary. So that's always an option. We tried to get away from that a long time ago, but this is a different kind of year. So, you know, it's great to put all budgets back together, but you still don't know what's going to happen the following fiscal year. So again, like, this is, this is not going to be a two- or three-year, one and done. This is going to be a time where just how we got, how we were in FY10, it took us a good four years to put money back in stabilization, to stop building a stabilization, to start getting back, putting people back to work. I mean, that's, it took a long time. So it's not, it's not going to be, we'll put everything back together in the fall, and we're going to be fine. There are certain things that we can look at again in the fall. That's how I feel. We're a three-member board. You guys can say whatever you want at this point. But because I've lived it and because I saw it, it's, it's hard. It is extremely hard.
We were all there. But I don't think that things are quite as bad, maybe, as they were then. And even if we look back, what our shortfalls were then, it wasn't as bad as all that. And I really would see, would not like to see, you know, a very short budget with lots of cuts at this point because we're in a very good position. Our revenues are much higher than they were back then. So overall, I think we're in a very good position comparatively speaking.
For, we are, like Kim said, we are for this fiscal year. We have the Chair of the House Ways and Means Committee telling us we're going to have a probably a $50 billion cut. That's twice what we had in FY10. And we may be having, we may, the town may be having a higher revenue stream. We're also spending a lot more money than we did back then. So I don't know. We'll, we're going to vote on postponing or setting a town meeting on Wednesday. Then Tim and Kim and David and Ally can get together and give us a timeline of when we can start working on this. But just like we did before, knowing that our town meeting was going to be in June, this is why we were going to have this meeting tonight. But now knowing that we're going to postpone it maybe for another two or three weeks will give us more time to go over this. Charlie?
You know, it is a ticklish situation. I'm not, you know, I'm not opposed to George's idea, you know, maybe a six-month budget, but I don't know how we are actually legally, if we can do that. I think everything has to be looked at, and we have to get a little bit, you know, it's a, it's a moving target that we're dealing with, and it's not going to be pretty whatever we do. So, you know, I think we should prepare ourselves. You know, I'm still not convinced we're going to have a June town meeting, but, you know, that's only my own opinion. But, you know, prepare, I guess the best thing to do is prepare for the worst and hope for the best. And that's, that's my feelings.
I agree. David?
I would agree with what Charlie said. Basically, I don't, number one, I don't know if you can do a six-month budget also. But the other thing too is that whatever budget we prepare for the start of the fiscal year is going to be a bare-bones budget at this point. And, you know, subsequently, we may have to come back in the fall and trim some, even some of that back. So at this point, you know, we're not going into the new fiscal year with any, you know, additional expenses that we have projected other than the bare necessities of getting through the next fiscal year and seeing how the state aid has impacted, how our revenues are impacted, and just moving forward from there. So the six-month, the year budget, you know, in the six-month budget, sort of track each other, and that will know, you know, in September, October, potentially even late August, where we stand, and we can make the adjustments accordingly. I don't think it's going to be better. I think it's going to be worse.
Kimberly, Kim?
Just to kind of follow up, there was some legislation that was enacted that does allow for some interim budgeting. So I think we could explore that a little bit more if folks are interested in doing that. But, you know, ultimately, we do have additional resources within town government to address some of the potential revenue loss. You know, we have been preparing very conservative budgets year after year, and we have been supplementing the capital stabilization fund. And one thing that we also do is, we've been setting aside for our allowance for abatements and exemptions. And that could actually be a potential budget saver for next year because we sit like, and we actually don't use as much as we set aside. So there are a few other options to think about that could help to mitigate some of the revenue loss from the state. But again, you would want to be conservative in terms of what you use that for. And again, plan would be to use it for one-time type items, recurring costs.
You have to be really careful with that if you start using funds that can only be replicated once you're creating a systemic problem that goes into the future that you'll never be able to get ahead of. You know, if you start using funds that are one-time-only funds, what Kim has suggested in terms of the reserve for the assessments, I can't think of the proper term, for abatements and assessments, that is a potential budget saver there that could be used if we haven't historically been tracking on that in terms of money that's been set aside but not used.
So, David, I actually have been tracking that, so...
Oh, I haven't been tracking. But I met.
Oh, okay. So again, there is definitely some resource there in order to use. So again, that's not going to save everything if we're looking at potentially $650,000 cut out of the budget from state aid. But, you know, we could be looking to save about $450,000 by reducing what we allow for the allowance for the abatements and exemptions for next year.
That's good.
Gary, do you have anything?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Charlie, George?
Oh, I'm good. Kevin Davis seems to have a hand and a hot handle, let's say. Thanks. But thank you both.
Lisa, one thing I'm not clear on is how are we proceeding?
So on Wednesday, we're going to vote to move town meeting. Then Tim's going to get, according to that vote, Tim's going to update the timeline of when we have to have things done by. And then we will probably have, start to meet. And again, I'd like to do it with the Finance Committee, but we're not going to get any more real numbers from the state, I don't know, for another two weeks, at least.
The timeline will be predicated on the time-to-town meeting, posting it in terms of, in the locations it needs to be posted in accordance with bylaw.
Well, Lisa, do you think that we will have firm numbers in two weeks from the state for this year?
I think we'll have, I don't think we'll have firm numbers. I think we'll have a better direction. I mean, they're going to have to come out with something soon enough because all of these towns are looking to, you know, to firm up their budget. So they're going to have, from what I understand from the state, they'll have a better direction from us in a couple of weeks. But, I mean, we have, we have the budget in front of us. We have several scenarios in front of us. So it's not like we're reinventing the wheel. We're just going to have to look at things that need to be cut further. I also would like to hear from the board about asking David to go back to the departments and, you know, knowing what we know now, to, again, look at their budgets because it's going to be staff or supplies at some point. And I think that, you know, I think that people can stop sharpening their pens and pencils because if they want that person in the office with them, you know, they got to start looking at stuff like that. What do you think? Ask them to revisit their budgets one more time? It's not going to hurt. Charles?
Well, yeah, I think they can, they probably be, the best thing to do is come up with a baby, maybe a couple of different scenarios, not going to say worst-case scenario, but different scenarios to, you know, see where we really are at to operate for the next year.
George, do you want, George, I don't know what you're asking. I know we're going to have meetings with the Finance Committee, and we're all going to discuss this all together. We're going to make a decision like we used to do way back in the day when both committees met together and went line by line, deciding on where we're going and what we're doing.
Okay, so that's the plan, moving forward, putting the budget together. Okay, but you, did you say, I want to make sure I didn't misunderstand you, that you think in two weeks, we will have a better handle on state funding?
May. I think we may, may have a better understanding. Not definite. Look, there are so many moving things. If this COVID goes up in the next two weeks, all bets are off. Like, we're looking at a whole different scenario. If, you know, people start going out into the world and go crazy, we're looking at a whole different scenario. So, I mean, right now, the only, the information that I got was we'll have a better direction in two weeks, and that came from the state.
Well, we should just hold our powder dry for two weeks and then move accordingly.
What do you guys think about asking David to ask the department heads to, you know, knowing what we know now, to just ask them to go back and look at things one more time?
I have no problem with that. I think, you know, like I said, if we can come up with a couple of different scenarios, then it would be easier to plan ahead.
Yeah, we can ask the department heads to do that too, you know what I mean? So maybe they prioritize their budgets as well.
Oh, that sounds good.
Okay. Gary, any input?
Sorry. Yeah, I think that is a good idea. We put in a request for scheduling a joint meeting. One of our members just told me that they begged this meeting. We're working at 5:00. So if we can meet later in the evening, maybe 6 o'clock, that would be helpful.
Okay. So David or Tim can reach out to you and see what time is best and on what date, so that works. All right. Perfect. Thank you. I don't think, is there anything else for you, Kim?
I don't know.
Do you want to stay? You're always welcome. I promise it's not going to be more than an hour.
I'll stay in case there's anything else.
Okay.
Please don't leave us.
Is there anything else for the Finance Committee?
No, I don't think so, Gary. We just have a, oh, sorry, Reserve Highway overtime request if you want to stay for that.
Yeah, I don't think they send me for that. That's, that's what, a small request, like $100 bucks or something like that?
$500, I think.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. I don't think I need to be involved in that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you're aware that it's coming your way.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night. Stay safe.
Yeah, you too.
Okay.
You too. Bye.
Thanks. Bye. All right. The Council on Aging, I'll turn this over to David so he can explain everything. Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, we have been working with the Council on Aging to implement a capital project that we've had going for about a year and a half now. We had to do certain upgrades to the Council on Aging building in terms of updating the service to the building in order to install a refrigerator freezer unit at the Council on Aging. Initially, we had planned on using capital funds, capital facility funds for the project. However, we had a meeting on Thursday with the Council on Aging, myself, Kim, Ally, and we discussed how we were going to finance it. And one of the things that came out of that meeting was that we were looking at using the two grants that had been provided by the state as part of the earmark grants in the supplemental budget in the amount of $20,000 and $25,000. And using that money instead of town money to purchase the refrigerator unit to install the concrete pad that the refrigerator will sit on to cut a door into the side of the building, to move some gas lines that are in the way of the project and to make the connection, the electrical connection to the new refrigerator unit. We're looking at approximately $50,000 in cost for the entire project. We're in the process now of trying to procure the freezer unit. And Bruce Wilber actually was, and Jeff are in the process of trying to get three quotes for that. I've been talking to Chuck about, and Andy DiGamo, about putting the pad in and how we're going to do that and maybe using highway personnel to do that, to save money and to get it done as quickly as possible. There was a discussion about June 30th date. I have contacted the Senator's Office because I was concerned about that. We most likely can do the whole project by June 30th, but I think that having a little bit of a breather in there might be helpful in terms of if we, in case we run over. The difference between the $45,000 and the $50,000 to $52,000 that we made it need in additional funds will be based upon using some of the facilities money we did set aside. So at this point, what the Council on Aging wants to do is they want, we need to rescind the April 13th vote on the $20,000 and then approve, approve the $20,000 spending plan to purchase the refrigeration unit. So both will go towards paying for the freezer refrigeration unit that'll, it should be noted that this is an external unit. It's going to be outside the building, and it's going to be a door inside that allows people to go in and out of the freezer unit. And it's kind of a critical thing because we have a lot of donations that are made to the town by Stop and Chop and by various other people, individuals. And we have opportunities where we could take food and freeze it for future use versus right now, where we don't have that capacity. So it would be a real resource to the seniors in the, to have this available to them so that we can expand our food program, our grocery program.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to rescind the vote taken on April 13th for the $20,000. And we'll first, we'll start with that.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwald?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And myself. And myself, yes. Then I'll make, um, I'll entertain a motion to um, approve the spending plan of the grants um, for uh. Forty-five thousand dollars, um, do you have a motion?
For both, if you can do it for both, the twenty and the twenty-five for a total of forty-five.
Did I say twenty-five? Did I say forty-five? What did I say?
No, you said twenty, no, you said twenty-five.
Okay.
Need to do it for both.
For forty-five, okay.
All right. I'll make the motion that we uh, fund the project through the twenty thousand dollars uh, from twenty nineteen. And the twenty-five thousand from twenty-twenty. Is that correct? That gonna work?
Yes.
Okay.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwall?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, reserve fund transfer for the highway department, yeah.
Uh, Kim was, looks like she hadn't had someone change.
Oh, sorry, Kim.
That's okay. Um, I just wanna clarify, both of those grants are fiscal twenty. They are not from nineteen.
All right. Well, then I'll, do you want me to make that motion? Ch- change that motion or can we just come it?
Good thing you caught that.
You can just amend your motion.
Okay, I'll amend the motion that the twenty thousand actually be from the twenty-twenty fiscal year budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwall?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome. That's why I was eavesdropping.
Sorry.
No problem. Thanks for the, thanks for the assist, Kim.
All right, so next we have a reserve fund transfer um, in the amount of five hundred dollars right now in the overtime budget is minus two oh eight sixty-two. Two employees accrued overtime during the windstorm on Monday, April thirteenth, and one employee accrued overtime in response to a police chase on Tuesday, April twenty-first. Um, and these events over, wiped out the overtime account. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make, go ahead, George.
It's my understanding that the highway department is only working sixteen hours a week. Is that correct?
David?
They were, they're each working two, two-day shifts. They split it up so that uh, they are not in um, I believe Mondays and Fridays. Those Tuesday, Wednesday, Thurs- um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. That's my understanding.
Yeah, they split it and one group works Monday, Tuesday, one group works Wednesday, Thursday.
I'm, I'm not sure how the, I'm not sure the logistics of it. They, they worked that part out, but I didn't have anything to do with that.
So, you don't know how many days a week these people are working?
I didn't say that. I said I don't know which people are working on which days. They split it into two different working groups and how they did that, I'm not sure how they did that.
But, do we know how many hours a week they're scheduled to work?
They're working two days. They're, you know, they're each working two.
Sixteen hours a day. I mean, I'm sorry, sixteen hours a week.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so how do we accrue overtime if they're only working sixteen hours a week?
This, this, the, the request didn't come from us. The request came from the, the highway surveyor. So the que- the question would better be directed towards the highway surveyor who submitted the request.
All right, then let's hold this until we can get him on the horn.
Okay, you are right with that, Charlie?
Yes, might as well clarify everything.
Yeah, um, I, I, I mean, if we have to go according to contract, that's one thing. I, I do think that somehow this should go back to the highway department and ask them to review it or to Chuck to review it because um. You know, we're all in a certain situation and we're all able to work from home and um, sometimes that's a benefit and I, and I think that this is a benefit for some people, so.
We actually did talk about that uh, on Thursday, uh, you know, uh, you know, basically trying to determine why it was submitted and. Looking at that, it had been submitted, like I said, by the highway surveyor, wasn't submitted internally.
Right, no, I, I think we all have realized that, so if we could just go back and clarify it, I think that would be great. All right, next, um, second amendment for allied wa- uh, allied waste ending on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, um, we uh, have received a uh, an amendment to the original agreement uh, for um. Um, refuse services for the upcoming year. Uh, the board chose to entertain that from Republic, which is also. The parent company, I believe is Allied Waste. The extension runs from July one, twenty-twenty to June thirty, twenty uh, twenty-one, and it is in the amount of three hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, we did, uh, council did review it. Um, there were questions about uh, the form of the contract. Uh, which uh, have been addressed in, as part of the amendment and uh, we now recommend that the board uh, approve the amendment so that we can move forward. And uh, make sure that we have uh, waste services uh, available beginning July one.
Okay, uh, Lisa, I have a question.
Go ahead.
David, is, has the amount increased that we, why are we reaffirm, reaffirming this contract, so to speak?
Well, the, the board agreed to go into the contract and uh, we need to file an amendment. I, I, Derek is also online. He, he may know. Uh, the answer to that. I don't know off the top of my head without my budget here. Um, the uh.
When, when the uh, when the contract was first signed, um, it was the, it was a three-year contract. And there were uh, two years. Years, um, so basically the, the numbers were going up in those two years, um, originally. We, it's following the same numbers. The only things that had changed was our prevailing wage. But the number is based off the number that was given five years ago.
No, I think Charlie's, I'm sorry, I don't wanna speak for you, Charlie, but I think his, his question is, did this change from the last time the board looked at this? Right, Charlie?
Right, right, exactly. Is this the same contract, Derek, or is this some, it hasn't been some change?
This amendment, I believe the board saw. Um, I know the board knew the number. I don't know. I don't know if the board saw the, this exact amendment I got on Friday. Um, I sent it on to uh, David at that point. But the, the number we have known, the, I don't know about the amendment. I don't know when you have received it.
We, we did have a discussion between Republic, myself, Derek, and uh, Mark Rich about certain things that we. Uh, Mark had picked up that he wanted corrected and there was agreement by all the parties that that, that the terms of the agreement were um. Acceptable and as far as the amount, I, I believe that it is the same amount, but I, once again, I don't have my budget here, so I can't.
Uh, the number I know we've discussed, um. I, we had received an amendment, we did have the meeting, we received the changes to the amendment, uh, but the number itself never changed.
Okay, all right, so, so. Am I correct in understanding that all we're doing is we're re- we're reaffirming language that Mike. Um, had originally took issue with and that you have cleared, cleared the matter up? Is that correct to understand?
That is correct.
And, but I think, I think you also have to vote to sign the contract.
Okay.
Did the amount that we have to pay change at all?
They're saying no.
They're saying no.
Was, there was a slight increase just on the prevailing wage.
Yeah, the prevailing wage, you had to, we had to get an updated schedule. We actually made the request to do that.
Right, that was, that was prior, whoa, time. That was prior to the board getting the, the, what they voted on the last time. We had that number, correct?
You had that number and I believe you had the updated number after the prevailing wage.
Okay, right, okay. So, yes, so what we voted on previously was with the, was basically a seven thousand dollar. A year increase that reflected the prevailing wage increase.
That is correct.
Okay, so, so all we're doing tonight is really reaff- uh, affirming the vote. So to speak, and with the language that Mark Rich has taken, corrected that he had taken issue with.
And you gotta endorse the amendment at some point, which I'll send out tomorrow via DocuSign.
Okay, that'd be fine.
There is no, no increase in dollar amount?
Not since we got the prevailing wage. Uh, once we got the update on the prevailing wage, there has not been an increase on the amount, no.
Well, I, you know, it's a little bit confusing. I, I think I'd like to get a statement from Mark Rich as to exactly what this means.
Well, Mark Rich has nothing to do with the amount of money that we're spending. Mark corrected technical details of the amendment.
But, uh. Amendment?
Or the technical language of, between the original agreement or the original amendment and then I had to have that reviewed by Mark Rich. He had a few. Uh, uh, questions about the existing contact, contract in relation to the amendment. Those issues have been addressed. It has nothing to do with the bottom line number, the issues that he had raised. Is that correct, Eric?
Yes, that is correct.
Personally, I, I'd like to hear that from Mark Rich. Could this gets a little confusing and I don't understand.
I think what's really confusing right now is this. No one, no one has their paper in front of them saying, hey, the last time we voted, it was three seventy-four, one twenty-eight, and here we are again, it's three seventy-four, one twenty-eight. So the numbers didn't go up. I think that's number one, that's what's confusing, you know.
Exactly, Lisa, that was my, that was my question.
Right, like, that's, that's what's confusing right now and uh, unfortunately, yeah, we're all here and we're all online and we're all facing each other, but. We need to come to these meetings with all and, and know what the questions are gonna be, anticipate them because. I, I mean, we don't, we're going by just what we have on our agenda and we're looking to people here to give us. It's the same number, guys, vote on it, and I guess we're gonna hold off on that.
Well, well, if I may, all right, yes, the, I, I remember the, the number on the agenda and it was comparable to the number. Uh, that we had voted. My, my question became it when Derek brought up the fact that the change in the prevailing wage item. And so, my question was that, and I, I think, I, I'm good with this. My question was just that, this is the same contract, it's just. That uh, Mark Rich had uh, requested some language uh. Changes, so to speak, to firm it up. So, George, your question, the, the contract is this. The operational end of the contract is uh, comparable to what, is what we voted on before. All that has changed is that Mark has decided that, because he does this all the time, if you ask me, uh, he. He looks at the same contract that he looked at before and he comes up with uh, little adjustments to make. So, that's. So, that, that was.
I just pulled the letter from the, I just pulled the letter that the uh, board previously approved. Uh, it was, the dollar amount was three hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That's what should be on that contract. Seven four one two eight.
Okay.
That solves that problem.
So, George, do you still have any issue?
No, the amount, the amount is the same and there is nothing. You know, I still don't quite understand the amendment, but uh.
Right.
You know, if you feel comfortable with it, uh, you know, I'm not gonna make a big deal over it.
Yeah, yeah. What, what I see here is just that.
Well, I think it comes down to either you're going to accept the amendment and potentially. Um, not put the project up, the bid in this environment and potentially increase the budget cost. By having to formally.
Not saying we should put it out to bid again. I just wanna really understand the amendment. I don't.
Well, the amendment, all the amendment does is it basically amends the co- the existing contract, the insistent, existing contract. It's still the underlying document. The amendment just allows us to enter into an extension of one year. For a set amount of money for a set period of time with the certain conditions that, that are followed in the amendment. So, i- i- it, the existing contract is still in place. This is just like an addendum to, this is not a separate contract.
No, no, my understanding that we've already voted on this contract once and we accepted it. A few meetings ago, correct?
We, we voted to accept, yes. We voted to not go out to bid and to accept the numbers that, that Republic gave us. Now, I think what's getting everybody hicked up, a hiccup is the word amendment. It's the amendment to the co- existing contract. And really, it is to sign this amendment, which is really just an extension of the contract. I don't think the wording amendment should have been on there at all. I think it should have been vote to sign the contract.
But we're voting on. Optional year or something like that, that.
No, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we voted to accept a contract a few meetings ago, correct?
A one-year, a one-year extension.
But you wanted to make sure that the language in the amendment was correct before you endorsed it. And that's why we put it back on again, so that you knew that the language that you were signing off on was at a public meeting and we endorse, and the board chose to endorse it.
Yeah, so I don't think we should get hooked up, hooked into the word amendment. It's just, we're, we're um. Extending the contract for one year.
I'll make the motion that we uh, extend the contract with uh. For, with first, well, with Republic, or their subsidiary uh, and. As we had previous that be done for the same amount of money.
George?
All right, I'll, I'll second that.
So, George, you know what we can do? We can say, um, and then. Contingent on Mark Rich, um. Coming back and saying that there were no big adjustments to the contract, just.
That would be great, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll make that as the amendment, okay.
Okay, here, here's my thing, guys, and I'm gonna call the vote. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwall?
Aye.
Okay, I'm voting no because I voted no the last time, so I'm voting no. So just so we're clear on that, after all this discussion. Um, Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwall?
Aye.
And Ms. Pacheco, no. Okay. Um, so I'll just, we'll, we'll just get that clarification um, and go from there. All right, um, we need to vote on the Arden installation of lights.
That, the uh, this is the contract for the installation of LED streetlights. Arden um. Was uh, the vendor that was chosen through the procurement process with MAPC, so it's essentially a uh. Not a state bid, but a, a bid that can be used by anybody. Um, we are in the process, we did originally propose. Uh, or they originally proposed using the MAPC contract. I talked to Mark about that. He said in other communities, he didn't feel that the MAPC contract. Uh, protected the interests of, best interest of the town. He suggested an alternative uh, contract. And I've been currently working through our consultant, uh, George Woodbury uh, and uh, through Arden to uh, to finalize a contract. But I, I wanted to let the board know, number one, that I wanna, I wanna get agreement from the board on a contract. And that we wanna get on the uh, schedule so that those streetlights can be uh, placed. The, I can give you, uh, in terms of the dollar amount, um, we're looking at five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, which is for eighty lights at fifty-four fifty a piece. Now, one component that's gonna be spelled out in the contract is that. Um, if the company has to rewire lights because they be, the, because of the technology that we use when the lights are first installed. There may be an additional cost of a hundred and five dollars. We're asking for, I had put in the contract that I, I want some kind of documentation. Either a photograph and um, a copy or a uh, the actual part that was taking out, taken out so that we can. Physically verify that the, the additional work had been done. Um, I guess it's more. Um, I guess it's more common in national grid communities than ever source. But, uh, there is a potential for the, uh, cost to go up from fifty-four hundred, uh, five, five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Just to make the board aware of that. We have the money in the budget. It should be, it shouldn't be a problem. We're going to get reimbursements from both MAPC and from ever source and the amount of ten thousand dollars. But I, I, I want to get this thing moving so that we can get it done before the end of the fiscal year. So I'm looking, you know, basically to, for the board to give me the authorization to, uh, and once again, council is involved. I'm not, you know, everything will be clear to council in terms of the form and content of the contract. But just allow me to move forward with it at this point.
Oh, David, did I understand you correctly? It's going to cost us fifty-four hundred, but we're going to be reimbursed by?
We're going to be reimbursed at some point. There's, there are other costs that we've incurred to date. We actually physically had to purchase the lights. That was about eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, we have a consultant in the amount of three thousand. That's all going to go to offset the total cost of the project. The net cost of the project will be somewhere around twenty-four thousand dollars.
For eighty lights.
But we need to spend another fifty-four hundred now to complete.
Already in the budget, George. With, it's all been part of the budget for the project. We don't, you're not asked, I'm not asking for any additional money.
Okay.
Money is already there. I'm asking for approval on the form of contract that we will have finalized through town council that we can then, you know, at least get on the schedule with Arden so that we can begin the installation process.
Okay.
It'll be based upon, the, the actual contract won't specify a dollar amount other than it'll say fifty-four dollars, fifty cents per light. We know there's eighty lights and that, uh, the rewiring fee will be a hundred and five dollars. And then they'll, the, the fifty-four, uh, actually the forty-three sixty, which is, uh, I built in a contingency because I, I want to actually buy additional lights. So when the, if and when they burn out, we have something in stock that we can then use. So I did put a contingency in there. That's why it's a fifty-four, fifty. And then if some of the lights need to be rewired, they'll be rewired at a cost of a hundred and five dollars. We're hoping to minimize that cost by documentation.
Each light's a hundred and some dollars?
No.
Yeah.
Each light is fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. However, some of the lights may be so old that the wiring, existing wiring for the light may have to be rewired. And in cases like that, we will incur a, a fee of a hundred and fif, a hundred and five dollars. We're hoping that based upon our knowledge of, of the lights, that there's not going to be a lot of those. But I just wanted to make the board aware that there could be additional charges. And we, that the twenty-five percent contingency may even cover the, the number of lights that that happened. So.
Uh, the only reason I'm asking the question, normally I would, this would be a project that I would really like. But because of budgetary issues that we started to meeting out with, uh, what, what is the cash flow that's going to come out of, uh, budget coming up?
Until we actually have the lights installed, we're projecting that the payoff for the lights will be two years. We will have paid off the entire project in two years with the cost savings that we will incur from changing the lights and sodium vapor to LED lights. Also, we're putting a thing called a demulator on the lights. So between the hours of like eleven and five AM, the lights will then be reduced an additional amount, which technically isn't really technically visible to the eye. But it will, uh, result in, uh, an additional savings of basically turning the light down.
Okay. So. All right.
So I guess, George, is your question, there's no more money that is going to be coming out of next year's budget because everything's included in this year's budget, correct, David?
Yeah.
That is the question.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All I needed to know.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hmm. I, I think that this is a lot of money personally for eighty lights. And I, I've heard it before. We'll see how many in two years. I don't believe it, but I will reluctantly vote yes. It's done. We already put this to bed. I, I've been dealing with this.
Eighteen thousand dollars worth of lights at the highway department, I think, you know.
Right. That's, that's my point, right? What are we going to do with the lights now? I just think that I wish from day one, we knew the exact cost of everything. Because I also, from our last meeting, heard that sometimes, um, because those lights and the way that they are do not get rid of the snow because they're not hot enough. So the snow stays on there. So now they're covered. And so there's another thing that you, there's another thing that you can put on the inside to make sure, and this is somebody that works at Eversource, to put on the inside to make sure that the snow doesn't stay up there and that melts away. So I just think that this project with all its good intentions is not going to save us enough money in two years from now. Maybe three, maybe four, but it's spent, it was, you know, one of the things that we asked you to do and it's done. Right, right. Okay. So next, um, we have the.
We need a roll call.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Charlie, nice call. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwall?
Aye.
And myself. Aye. Okay, um, um, acceptance of the MOA from the chief of police.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Uh, MOA being?
His one year, one year extension. He signed it. He delivered it.
Okay. No money involved in this at all?
No.
You can make a motion?
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Gr, Grunwall?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And myself. Aye. Acceptance of the MOA from, um, David Demont.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Can you please explain MOA clearly to me again? Sorry, I don't.
It's, oh, no, that's okay. It's a memorandum of agreement. It means that, um, we, he signed the contract that we sent him and he sent us a letter, which is a memorandum of agreement, accepting the terms of the, of the contract.
So he has a contract?
As of July first, I would not have a contract.
Right, but he's, he's signed, so he's all set.
But you also sent us a letter that you.
That's, um, that's, that's, um, on for the, uh, next meeting. So we have to do this in steps. This we have to accept and then the next meeting, we accept further correspondence. Are you going to second it, George?
No, I, I, I just don't understand the process. I'm not comfortable.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to second it. Um, the process is, is that we negotiated all the contracts, right? We gave him his contract and just like everybody else, it's, it's an extension of one year. Um, but we had negotiated several other things. He signed off on it. And that's all it is, is signing off on what we all came to terms to agree after all those meetings. That's all it is.
Okay, all right.
Okay. All right. So motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwall?
Aye.
And Ms. Pacheco, yes. Doesn't change anything that we've already voted on and agreed to. Um, acceptance of the minutes on four twenty-seven and four twenty-nine.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And Mr. Grunwall?
Aye.
And myself. Aye. Town administrators report.
Okay, I only have a few things. Um, one is I did have a conversation with Mary Ellen DeFrayis uh, at Mass Development regarding the Freetown Screw property and, um, you know, our intention regarding that property and discussing various options. Uh, I'm not at liberty at this point to go into the details of that. I want to discuss it with the Economic Development Committee, which we're meeting tomorrow night. And also, uh, I'm going to want to call a meeting of the, um, the Expert Housing Authority to talk about, uh, the project and, and how that all fits in. And at that point, uh, I'm, I will be able to put together a letter that will allow us to, uh, basically fulfill our obligation, uh, regarding the, uh, outstanding grant agreement.
Perfect. I think that the, having it with the e-comm, um, is a perfect place for it. Charlie?
Fine. I have no.
George?
Fine.
Okay. Anything else, David?
Uh, cable contract, uh, we're meeting for the second time tomorrow evening, uh, an executive session to go over, uh, what we, uh, are going to be proposing to Comcast as part of the agreement. Um, once I have a final list, what I will do is I'll forward that out to the individual members of the board to take a look at it before we actually go in, uh, to the first session, which I'm hoping is going to be at the end of, uh, the end of May, the beginning of June. And, uh, if the board has anything additional they'd like to add or would like to change any of those terms. Because ultimately, we are negotiating the contract on behalf of the town and on behalf of the board. So I want to make sure I have agreement from the board, uh, about what the, the, the proposals that we are going to be making, uh, to, uh, to Comcast.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, just, uh, I'm working on a reopening plan. I've had some discussions with a couple of different people about that. I, I'm going to have, uh, something ready. I know at some point we're going to be all going back in and how we're going to structure that and what we're going to require will be part of that. So. And probably maybe in the next meeting or the meeting after that, we'll start talking about how we're going to transition. And, uh, I know that the governor is looking at May eighteenth as being lifting, lifting of, uh, the, uh, I don't know what that is in the background, um, lifting of the, uh, the, the essential, non-essential business, um, uh, agreement and that, uh, at some point, we're going to have to start addressing, you know, how we're going to, to make the move back into town hall and how we're going to structure that. And finally, uh, tomorrow, I'm going to be sending out, um, through DocuSign, uh, the wiring contract for vertical for the speakers, uh, the board approved that at the last meeting. We pulled together all of the, the attachments that we needed, the prevailing wage, the, um, certificate of insurance and the proposal. So, uh, we're putting it together. Tim is going to, uh, uh, combine it all into one PDF and, and I'm going to then send it out to the board members to be signed. Um, that's it.
Okay. I will turn it over to the Board of Health.
Okay, I, I have a number of issues that I want to discuss, uh, over the next few meetings. Um, just want to address one issue right now. Is Derek still here? Are you on here, Derek?
Yep.
What is the status of the mattresses? We discussed these at a meeting, uh, two, three months ago. And it was supposed to be gone. And it's my understanding that, uh, we had a grant that has expired now. So we're stuck with mountain of mattresses. So could you explain that to us, please?
Yep, I had gotten a bid, uh, I was having a hard time getting rid of the mattresses back in December, January. I had finally gotten a bid right when the whole COVID, uh, pandemic started. So at that point, I had to slow down on it. Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we can get moving on that again.
Okay, so how big was the grant that we lost?
I don't really know. I, I think we had maybe one year of the grant that we did use and then that was it.
Could you have that for us for the next meeting?
I can try, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
George, if I may, uh, go ahead. I believe the grant that Derek had spoke of was a grant that we had that we, we used. There has not been a replacement grant for that. Okay? And there's another thing that I think we ought to, um, have an understanding on is when we spoke and when we redid the fees for, uh, the transfer station back, I want to say last, uh, May or so. Um, we, there was a discussion about the costs and the fee for the mattress. And we, we put a fee for the dumping of a mattress at the transfer station at lower than the cost of getting rid of it with the, with the understanding that we didn't want mattresses and box springs all over the roadside. So that's, that's a real issue that, you know, i, is the basis of this problem with a pile of mattresses at the transfer station is that we are not, um, we don't charge the comparable fee with the cost of disposing of them. So I think we have to have that understanding is that's where we as a board made a policy.
And I can add one thing to that as well is, uh, actually this week, uh, either tomorrow or possibly Thursday, I'm going to be, uh, on a webinar trying to get back onto the grant for the mattresses.
Okay.
But hopefully that goes through.
Regarding the fees, uh, the fee has been increased in the last few weeks. Is that right?
In the last few weeks, no. We increased the fees when we voted. I want to say it was back, uh, like Charlie, sometime last summer, uh, end of the summer, we voted on the increase.
That has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. All the fee, uh, uh, amounts have to be agreed to by the Board of Health, which is the Board of Selectmen.
And we did raise the fee on the mattresses also with another built-in increase for them to go up again in twenty-twenty-one.
Right. So the fee that's on the sign is the accurate fee?
The fee that's on the sign is?
Well, that's not what's being charged, Derek.
George.
Derek, the only reason I can say that with such confidence is I happened to go there a couple of weeks ago and dump a mattress and I paid more than what was posted. I actually asked a question and I was told the fee was increased. So, uh, what can I tell you?
Did you see the old sign or the new sign?
The sign that was up there two weeks ago.
If there is an old sign, if there is an old sign down, then I would recommend just pulling down the old sign and then, um, have Vicky just look at, oh, over all of the, um, numbers and make sure they're all right. And then we'll, we, we can go from there. That's my suggestion.
Okay.
Charlie? Oh, I'm not, I'm not, sorry. Go ahead. George, you're, you're in charge, not me.
Charlie, you, you had.
Well, yeah, I mean, the bottom line is, I, I know because we had the discussion and I, and I re, uh, read the minutes is that our policy is that we're charging a rate that does not cover the actual disposal cost of a mattress or box spring. And that's really the, the bottom line here with why there's the pile of mattresses there. Now Derek has said he's going to, uh, uh, excuse me, George, but, you know.
Go ahead, go ahead. Sorry.
And, and Derek has, has said he's looking into, uh, the possibility of another grant. So the, the problem, the basic problem is that we have a policy and we discussed it at the time is that we're not charging what the actual cost is because we don't want to, we want to get some money for it instead of having somebody saying, I'm not paying fifty or seventy-five dollars or whatever the fee might be. And they throw at the, on the side of the road or in some, uh, forested area. And then we have to pay to pick it up and we don't get the disposal fee. So I think that's really the issue that we have to understand, uh, as we talk about this.
Now, the, the only issue I have is there is a sign there that's relatively new. It's, was put up since we voted on price increases overall for the transfer station. And we're not charging. For the transfer station and we're not charging.
George, we are charging the correct amount. The correct sign is up.
Uh, yeah, it it seems to me that if there's if there's an issue, there's an issue with. The fee, the correct fee being uh charged, then we. And we address that issue through Derek. Derek will address that issue. If you brought it up to Derek and he. And if the attendant, if she's not charging the correct amount, then, you know, we deal with that that way.
As a board, I think we should know how much is being charged and is the sign correct? You know, I mean, it has nothing to do with what we're paying to get rid of it. We had that conversation months ago.
The sign is correct. The sign was not correct, we have corrected it. The sign is correct.
I have, I have a suggestion. Tim, can you send out all the fees to us this week so we can look at them all, please? All right, perfect. I have a question for Derek through George, if you don't mind, George.
Oh, go right ahead.
Derek, who takes care of getting rid of all this stuff at the transfer station? Is it Republic or do we have a separate contract from somebody else?
We have Republic, we have a different one that does the metal, we have a different one that does the cardboard. Um, I'm drawing a blank on names right now, but it's not strictly Republic.
Okay, so we do have the ability to to um look into other avenues and other places. To get a reduced amount of money to get rid of some of the stuff up there, correct?
That we can look around, sure.
Okay, I I suggest that we do that then through George.
Yeah, could could you send us all the contracts for all these different things? Like, there's another issue out there, uh, which I was gonna save for later, but. The rental of the dumpsters themselves, but what is the issue with that?
What issue?
Uh, those dumpsters are not ours, is that correct?
We have some that are ours and we have some that are not.
They're rented, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, uh, can you explain to us exactly how that works? Uh, who they belong to, who repairs them, what what, you know, I I I'm just totally.
We have, we have dumpsters that we own that we have repaired and then we have dumpsters that do not belong to us.
And do we pay rent on that or what is the, how does that work?
Yes, but that's something that we can look into, into changing that up.
Okay, I can address that if, from memory, so to speak, uh, from the board. There, we have dumpsters there that are owned by the town. And we have also had a few dumpsters. I I wanna say, what we'll say is. There's six dumpsters that are owned by the town and two that are potentially rented from the carrier. Um, most, I think it's Republic that actually does it. And the the price of renting. The dumpsters that we do rent was uh cost efficient at the time, at least. To overcome any idea of purchasing and or repairing the old dumpsters that the town had. The town had originally had all the dumpsters there. Some of them deteriorated over the years. Um, and had to be disposed of. Um, some of them were repaired. Uh, so the fact that we lease them is basically uh. Or at the ti- at least at the time, and that's gonna say that it is now two or three years later. Uh, but uh, the price of renting them was better than repairing or purchasing. Uh, new dumpsters, George.
Okay.
I can look and if that's still the case now, though.
Right, I mean, but I I can remember, I don't know if you were just new Derek and we did this or.
No, that was the previous to me.
Okay, must have been done under Kevin. Okay.
I I have a question. Do we need them all? Are we using them all?
Uh, no, we probably don't need them all. We could probably, if I can, uh, we could sue about getting rid of the rent. We'd be okay.
All right, that's perfect. So we can get rid of that, too. That's awesome. Thank you. George, anything else?
Yeah, just one clarification on this, on the plan or, excuse me, schedule. Regarding the mattresses.
I don't have one right now. That's I've, I've been a little bit busy with coronavirus stuff. So I've had to put a couple of things on the hold-on pile and that was one of them.
I understand that, but this precedes Corona by quite.
So said that I had issues getting bids in December, January. So I did explain that. When I finally did get a bid is when they're starting.
Okay.
So we have a meeting in two weeks from now. We'll we'll just, you wanna get an update in two weeks?
That would be great.
Okay, is that good, Derek?
Yeah, we'll see what I can get.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Put that on the agenda to further discuss this issue.
Okay, um, is that it, George?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right, turning it over to Mr. Sullivan.
All right, uh, and I might turn it over to David. This is all news to me, so to speak, but David has the uh the facts, I'm sure.
Okay, we um, uh, Tim and I and Ally uh had met. Uh, to talk about the amount of outstanding uh vacation time that was still left on the books. Uh, in the past, uh, we uh for non-union and certain union people. Uh, we haven't allowed people to carry overtime uh into the new fiscal year. Um, we looked at the potential exposure. We sent out a spreadsheet showing how many hours were out there as well as the cost. Uh, to buy back that time, which I I do not recommend that we do. Uh, my recommendation at this point would be to not allow people to carry over. Um, vacation time into the new fiscal year. Um, we are currently, um, you know. Most people are working from home. Um, I know it's a difficult situation for some that still have vacation time. Because they, uh, you know, they feel like they, you know, can't go away. But that's not part of the collective bargaining agreement saying, when you get vacation time, you know, it's not our responsibility to be able to make sure you can go away. So my uh recommendation would be to the board that uh we require that all. Employees that have outstanding vacation time use that vacation time between now and the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth. Uh, there are provisions, I believe, of police uh that allow them to carry over a a couple or several days. And that would continue in force in in um, uh, in conjunction with the existing CBA.
This would include all union employees?
include everybody. Other than like the police that have a stipulated agreement saying that they. Uh, you know, they have an ability to carry it over. We're not, we're not advocating or we're not recommending. Uh, that people are gonna be allowed to carry over vacation time. It's it it's a use it or lose it kind of situation. If you come up, like I come up to the end of the fiscal year and I have, you know, four days. And I say, oh geez, you know, I, uh, you know, if I don't take those four days in June. Then they don't carry over into the new fiscal year and I lose them. So it's gonna be the same situation here.
Well, I can tell you that I totally, totally am not in favor of this. Uh, I have never, in my short career, worked anywheres where you lost vacation days.
Well, that's the way it is right now, George.
Okay, where? In Freetown?
Yes, and the according to the the certain bargaining agreements, at the end of the year, if you you don't use your vacation time, you don't get it.
So the bargaining units lose their vacation time if they don't use it. Is that correct?
Correct.
If they bargain that, that's, that's, you know.
George, our, our responsibility is to pay people for fifty-two weeks of pay. Uh, and I don't know if Kim is actually still here and that, maybe she'll agree and that, uh, but under the. Under the police and dispatcher contracts, they both uh stipulate that exactly. Is that that you're paid for fifty-two weeks, uh, no more. Okay, i- is that a correct assumption, Kim?
I believe that that is correct. However, there is a provision within the uh police contract that does allow that. Buyback.
Buyback.
But that had to be determined prior to March thirty-first, I believe, and that, so that has been done.
Right, yeah.
So in essence, they would get more than fifty-two weeks if they're buying back time. But that's been agreed to.
But other than that, uh, provision that has come up in this last contract, it had been. And and the other contracts do not uh address it at all. I I looked that up today uh myself.
Correct.
Well, I again, I can only state my opinion here. Uh, I think it's totally not the right thing to do. If uh I am an employee and I get two weeks a year or three weeks, whatever. And I choose not to take it in year one and it rolls over, uh, that's how it's done, I think, in most industries. Uh, to take that away from people, I think is not right and I would.
We're not, we're not taking it away from them, no.
We're not taking away.
They never had it to begin with.
Yeah.
Well, you saying you can't roll it over, to me, that's what that means.
Right.
If I don't use it in year one, I can't use it in year.
And they agree to that in the contract.
Well, who is they?
All the unions, all of the unions, all of them.
Well, if they agree to that, then union contracts is a different animal. They agree to it, so that's fine. But how about everyone else that's not a union employee? How are they affected?
Well, George, if I may, okay, I, I work in year one. And I don't use a vacation, a week of vacation. Year two, my salary goes up. And now I take another week of vacation in the second year. I'm actually being paid more. Than I agreed to in the first year. That's, that's the principle as I see it. That's why I, I would oppose to rolling over vacation because you subsequently get more. Than you actually earned. That's, that's my view on that.
You you don't get, well, uh, let me just say, I I I can't agree with that, but that's immaterial. Whether I agree with a particular point. I I, what I totally disagree with is making somebody lose. Vacation time that they've earned.
The the problem, the problem is too, is that if you allow people to carry time over into the new fiscal year. Then you're creating a liability on the other side of the ledger in that now you have to fill those shifts. So you have to, you know, uh, you know, provide a mechanism so that the office gets covered. So.
No, that that's doesn't change anything for me. You know, we, if if you want to mandate. That people take their vacation in the given year, that would be a different situation than they would take.
That's what we're saying.
That's what it is. May I?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks. That's exactly right, George. Everybody has to take their vacation within a year, within the the year. This year was a little bit different, right? But we can't afford to carry it over because either A, we have to pay them out. Or B, we're gonna have to, um, they'll incur overtime, we'll have to cover offices. We have to encourage them to take their vacation between now and the end of the fiscal year, so we're not. A, the collective bargaining units can't carry it over anyway. So we don't want them to lose it. We want them to, now's the time to take it. They have to take it between now and the end of the year. It's not like anything that they didn't know. They already knew that this was coming. Everybody knows that they have to take their. Um, vacation by the end of the fiscal year. We're not blindside, we're not blindsiding anybody.
Okay, I mean, union is a different animal, as far as I'm concerned. They agree to the terms. We both have to live with.
Who else are we talking about, George? Uh, generally, the the contracts don't, the contracts such as mine don't let me. Carry time into the next year. Um, I don't know if Kim starts, is Kim, do they let you or?
My contract does have a provision that I can discuss it with the board and ask um, who to carry over, but I have never used that.
And my point about vacation is that vacation is a. A benefit given to you so that you can walk away from work for a week or two or whatever is and relax. And everyone gets a benefit from it. The employer gets a benefit from it and the employee gets a benefit from it. So if you're accumulating vacation over years, the. That's, that's not using the vacation, okay, for what the purpose, as I see it, is. And I'll say my, my years with the town, I always knew I had to use that vacation time in the period. Uh, that it was in, okay. So I, David, do you want a vote of the board to?
I would say yes, you wanna vote on it. The other, the other thing, too, it's, it's an unfortunate situation in that.
Right.
You know, people are out now and and they truly, it's not like, if you were to say, geez, I'm taking Memorial Day week off. There's a good likelihood that you won't be able to travel anywhere. You know, that it's gonna be a stay-home vacation and and that's really unfortunate for everybody because, you know, it hurts the economy. The employee really doesn't get the kind of break that they were hoping to get. But the contract doesn't say that, you know. You know, this is, these are unusual times. And like I said, it's unfortunate that, you know, we have to require this. Because, you know, I've already had an inquiry about it, so.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to um, encourage.
Just one minute. You make the motion. Derek uh is uh kinda lit up here. And if Derek, if you do have some input out, I'll give you a minute to, if you have some. Something you wanna address the board about this.
Uh, there's no way I'm taking my vacation before June. It is what it is.
We understand. Uh, yeah, I, you know, we understand that, but the 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 fact of the matter is that I think you. I hope you understand that we're paying you for fifty-two weeks. Unfortunately, this has been, you know. A phenomenon phenomena I don't wanna ever see again.
I haven't had a day off in two months. I worked Easter, I worked Patriots Day. So, yeah.
Um, well, maybe.
It's fine, I got it.
All right. All right.
I I'm gonna make my motion to have all union contract people. Take their vacation between now and the end of the fiscal year. That, I'm gonna start off with that.
Okay, motion has been made.
And to clarify, that is in their contract.
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
The motion been made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwell?
Aye.
Mr. Chico?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes.
Then I would like to see from the bylaw people and have, because those are the only ones. And I'm not sure what is stipulated in there. Um, I'd like to see from the bylaw people who has. Vacation on the book. Look, I'm not, I I'm just gonna say it like it is. Derek. It's awful. He's been straight out. Everybody else has been home and Derek has been working nonstop every day. I I get it. And I don't, and and I'm one that's either, it's one way or for all, for everybody. But in this situation, I feel really badly about that.
I would also uh agree with that sentiment because I know I, Derek. You know, is in constant contact with me and he is out there, he's on our front line. And, you know, the fact that he has basically worked two months, you know, nonstop, I think that there should be some consideration for that.
I, and I'll reaffirm both of those statements to me. Uh, and I think mattresses at the the uh transfer station. Gonna have to wait uh for a long time. But uh, all right. Well, then, why don't we put this on the agenda to see what we might want to come up with. As a remedy for the issue with Derek. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, I'm also thinking. Not essential people that are working from home should take their vacation before. not essential people that are working from home should take their vacation before the end of the end of the fiscal year.
I I have no, I have no issue with that at all.
All right, so I'm going to make that as a motion. For all non-con, non-union people, all non-essential people should take their vacation between now and the end of the fiscal year. That's my motion.
Motion, do I have a second? I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwall?
No.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes.
Okay. Is that it for you?
That's it for me. The only thing is the executive session.
Doing it right now. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Freetown Full Time Firefighters Association because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwall?
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco? Yes.
Do we just want to confirm you do declare, correct?
Yes.
I hear.
All right.
That'd be a stickler here, but is Derek still with us?
I believe he is.
I'll I'll make sure, I'll make sure to give him the boot before we, before we start talking.
Yeah, and Ally's, yep.
Yeah.
Ally's staying, David's staying, Tim's staying, Derek's leaving.
No, Derek is gone. All right, I'll end the live stream and we'll be good to go. We're not coming back to open session, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just a moment then. Thanks.